1.1, Detective Leach.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
2.0, approval of the agenda for the day.
Do you have a motion?
Absolutely.
Motion by Kathy, seconded by Andy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining carried.
3.0, minutes of previous meetings.
Do you have a motion?
I don't know.
Motion by Amanda.
Second.
Seconded by Kathy. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining carried.
4.0, verbal communications. Residents wishing to be heard. Any resident of the Auburn Memorial City School District is welcome to address the Board of Education, items pertaining to the education and/or operation of the school district. There will be time provided on the agenda at this point. Any resident wishing to address the Board of Education is requested to come forward to the lectern and being recognized and to give his or her name and address. Questions relating to the employees of the district will not be permitted. Such questions should be referred to the superintendent at another time. Residents have been asked to sign in at the lectern and limit their presentation to three minutes or less.
Do we have any residents this evening wishing to be heard? Thank you.
5.0, superintendents' reports. 5.1, reorganizational plan. Ms. Ellen?
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I would like to present some information about how we might reorganize some existing resources that we have in our district to meet the challenges that we continue to face. Some of these challenges I've been talking about since I arrived within small group meetings with educators in the field, community leaders, and especially with the Board of Education. Many of these challenges are around meeting the needs of all of our learners and creating an environment where we have a shared vision around 21st century teaching and learning and how we can ensure that our children, when they leave our system, are competitive in a global society. And I want to sort of draw your attention to how I've changed the language that I'm using around being competitive within a global society rather than competing within a global society. Because I would submit that we should move away from that language, not just as a public school district, but as Americans in general. Because as we know, China, for example, has more honored students than we have students. And we should not be, I don't think, sending the message to our students that they need to compete with other countries. They need to be able to be competitive in a global market because at the end of the day, we have to teach them how to appreciate other cultures and how to close the deal. And so I just wanted to highlight that particular piece. So, the challenges that we face in Auburn include a lack of leadership for informational and instructional technology. And when we're talking about informational technologies, we're talking about the replacement of a student management system that helps us better understand how students are positioned for success in this district. Instructional technology really speaks to some of the pieces that we've added this year, including Imagine Learning, for example, a gaming software that we're using to support our students' ability to learn, to read. Promoting stakeholder participation continues to be a challenge in this district, in particular around trying to speak to people about their feelings about how, what our students need in terms of being prepared, technologically prepared, for the world that they will enter and how they can assist us, right, in making those decisions and making that become a reality. Digital resources, again, to meet the demands of a 21st century teaching and learning environment. I was talking to the cabinet today, and I think that part of what needs to happen is that we need to develop a shared understanding of what we mean by a 21st century teaching and learning environment. Because I'm not sure, when we say that, that all the educators in this district conjure up the same image and that we have a shared focus around that. And so we need to start there. We have plenty of data in this district. It's accessing the data, right, to drive our decisions that becomes more problematic. And I've shared several times with you the story about my going after the GED data and having a stack of papers that I had to sort through and do some counting with a calculator to try to measure the success of that particular program and whether or not we were getting the best bang for our buck. And I know that this is not really how you want me to be spending my time, and it's not a good use of my time in general, but it needed to be done. I think it's important that we develop a shared accountability system to monitor district growth in general. We need to understand what those markers are going to be, some of the targets we have set mutually in a shared way. And we also need to talk about what are going to be other markers that are going to measure district growth. And support and execution of the New York State reform agenda, which we've become very familiar with over time, but just for the sake of the public, that includes, you know, the alignment of our curriculum to the Common Core standards, the implementation of a professional performance review process, and also the impending online assessments that the district will have to engage our students and teachers in. Additionally, new on the horizon is the requirement that we will have to develop a data dashboard that the state is using their, I believe, race-to-the-top money to support districts in piloting a data dashboard for two years. After that, you'll probably be on your own in terms of the cost for this data dashboard. And we also, again, need the capacity in this organization to lead that work. I want you to feel free to ask me any questions as we move through this as a team. I know I'm the only one standing at the podium, but the team will be participating with me, and you can ask as we move through or hold your customs until the end. So this realignment of existing resources, again, to build capacity, we are recommending that we create the position of chief information officer in this district. As you can see there, this is the objective for the chief information officer, to provide leadership for the implementation of the operations for informational instructional technology throughout our district. More specifically, we really want to be able to leverage that information to support resources and streamline our processes as it relates to all facets of our organization, including teaching and learning, human resources, finance, management, and operations. I believe that this work is critical to moving us towards meeting the goals that are outlined in our mission statement. As we've looked at moving the work forward through the same three lenses that were a part of my entry plan, and we have driven the work forward again using these three areas, the first area I want to talk about is the building out of high-quality curriculum and instruction. This position will assist us in monitoring the implementation of pre-K through 12 curriculum and best practices, promote collaborative sharing of best practices by creating digitized resources, and Lila's going to talk about that a little bit in terms of what that might look like, specifically growing work that's ongoing relative to Google Docs and perhaps some other ways that we can, again, promote professional learning communities within our district without formalizing that. I've worked in districts that have adopted professional learning communities in a more formal environment, and I can tell you, when you don't digitize that kind of environment, it becomes very costly in terms of the amount of time that it takes for people to meet and plan together. Assisting and organizing educators for collaborative work. This position is going to be critical in helping educators understand the data and how they can use that data to combine and collectively work around a shared goal, because it would become so obvious to them when they're looking at the data and they're able to interpret the data. And this person is going to help them look at it in a way that's understandable. So it's not just getting the data into the hands of educators in the field, it's giving it to them in a way, providing resources within the district to help them understand how to use it. And building out assessment literacy. So I would just ask Lila to sort of elaborate on the collaborative sharing piece.
So, one of our goals at the secondary level especially has been to have departments, both at the junior high and high school, begin to work on creating balanced assessment systems so that we aren't just using state assessment data or even final exam data as the data that's driving our work and our instruction. And we've had, you know, certainly beginnings of a lot of this work. Bob Montgomery worked extensively with the Science Department at the junior high. Again, that's just one in a long list of departments that need that kind of support for building assessments that are ongoing and that are informative. And certainly, we also started this work some time ago, but with the Common Core and the changes and the requirements and the expectations of the standards, we've had to adjust a lot of the work that we've already had in place. So, that work is something that is really important in terms of moving our whole system towards data-driven instruction. And certainly, the work that they've been doing, I'll give the Science Department example, this year was really enhanced by their use of the Google Docs application, where they have the assessments right on Google Docs for anyone to go and download and use, and then they upload the data. They have a calendar in there that says this is when the time period the assessments will be given, this is when we'll be scoring them, this is when our team meeting time, we'll be analyzing that data. So just monitoring and managing that on a larger scale is something that we're really in need of support of. And don't get me wrong, by not mentioning the elementary school, we have lots of those same needs at the elementary school. We're managing them in a little bit of a different way with specific grade levels across the district and our AIS teachers, but we still would very much benefit from a consolidated data information approach to all of this work.
I would like to extend a little bit too in terms of, because I don't want to edge of speak, and I want to make sure that people understand what we mean by assessment literacy. We would assume that teachers would understand how to use the results of the formative assessments that they're giving their classroom all of the time, right? Tests, quizzes, et cetera. And we may also make some assumptions about the analysis and accessibility of state exams, which is a more summative type of assessment that teachers are engaged in. But I believe that we should not be making those kinds of assumptions, and we should be responsible for teaching teachers how to use the results of those assessments to modify curriculum and modify instruction. And we should be teaching them, right, how the results of these assessments speak to them. They should know whether or not, when they get a specific result, whether or not it's a result of a curriculum gap, something that we're not teaching, or is it a result of something that we're not teaching well, where we're not using best instructional practices? Is that why our students are not performing to the levels we expect? Or is it a combination of both? So that's what we mean by building assessment literacy in the district. We should not assume that teachers bring this skill set to the table. And in fact, we've learned as a state that they do not bring the skill set to the table because we don't teach it to them in teacher preparation courses. And so they are adding that piece as we speak, right, to the certification exams, and in turn, higher ed will have to respond by preparing teachers in a different way. Leadership and innovation, again, is another lens, one of the three that we've been moving the work forward through this year. Leveraging the student information system to optimize intervention strategies is going to be critical. I've seen districts in the past that I've worked for leverage a position of this nature, chief information officer, to ensure that we are using intervention strategies across the board, pre-K-12, to make sure that our students are being maximally engaged and that they can continue to persist even in the face of difficulty. A good example of this is sometimes when students get to the high school and they falter in a particular course, we know that when you don't pass in high school, you don't just move on. You have to accrue a certain number of credits to be a sophomore, a junior, et cetera. And in a former district that I worked, we looked at how many students, for example, are sitting in 10th grade but really are in the 11th grade cohort, should be 11th grade students, but failed a number of courses and now are still sitting in the 10th grade. However, they have enough seat time to be 11th grader, particularly in English, right? Because English is the place where they're going to have to sit for the Regents. We were able to pull those names up in a matter of seconds using School Tool and School Tool IQ. We were able to then talk with the principal and teachers about who these students are and have them sit while they were sitting in 10th grade because they qualified for the 11th grade Regents, have them sit for the Regents. Before we had this position and the right tools to do that, we missed this opportunity year after year after year. And these 10th graders, who were really 11th graders, did not sit for the 11th grade Regents. When they did, when we did identify them and we finally gave them the opportunity that they had already qualified for in terms of seat time, to sit for the 11th grade Regents, we found that more than 50% of them passed the Regents. What does that mean? That means now you have another reason to persist in the face of difficulty, even though you're going to have to do some courses and continue to persist as a sophomore. You know that when you get to 11th grade, you won't be faced with having to pass the 11th grade Regents, you would have already passed it. And so these are just, that's just one example of the many things, right, that you can do with a tool of this nature and a position of this nature in terms of making sure that you are maximizing every intervention strategy that you have available to you to ensure that kids are persisting. Investigate new tools to promote efficiencies. We've talked about this in the past. One of the new tools we've adopted is School Tool, and we know that's going to be very powerful in terms of promoting community engagement. Finance managers, also a new tool that this district has adopted, that 478 other districts in New York State are using to manage finance and operations. But there are many modules to finance manager that we don't understand because we don't have that level of expertise in our district that we can leverage to not only help us with finance and operations, but to help us with our human resource needs as well. Provide oversight and implementation, again, for School Tool and School Tool IQ, which is the data mining piece of the software. And implement and evaluate district technology professional development needs. I think this is a critical need in our district if we are, and I know that we are, committed to ensuring that our kids are prepared to operate and, again, compete in a 21st century environment. One of the things that's interesting, that it was born out of an opportunity that we created for professionals this year in our leadership and innovation zones. Robert Montgomery was able to put together a group of educators to interview students that have graduated from our district and are in college. They were, some of them high-performing students, certainly successful in gaining access to their high school diploma and moving on to a four-year institution, and one of them a two-year institution who's planning to transition to a four-year institution. And this interview with the students went on for about an hour, and I'm going to show clips of it in the future. But what's interesting about it is that many of them understood that they needed some kind of technology to meet with success in college, but they weren't really clear specifically on what they needed. Many of them bought a laptop to school with them. One student commented that as soon as she was faced with having to create a spreadsheet in a Chemistry 100 class, she realized that she hadn't even had the person at the store download Excel, right, into her laptop, and she certainly did not know how to use it. So she, this was a student, again, that was very successful in our system, that found herself unprepared to meet the demands of her college courses. Because of, I think, a lack of systemic planning in our district in terms of identifying what students will need to know and be able to do relative to technology literacy to meet with success at the higher education level. Systems thinking is the final lens that we've been, again, looking at our work through. We've talked about providing oversight for the development of a district technology plan. This board is committed to building out the infrastructure, technology infrastructure in this district, and planning a future, again, that talks about how we will deal with informational technology services and how we will deal with instructional technology. And part of that, and part of our plan really talks about what kids should know and be able to do by the end of first grade, right, in terms of software, right, in terms of them being able to navigate Word or a database or Excel or PowerPoint. We do have a loose plan for that. The issue is making sure that we have, again, a shared accountability system so that our students are learning these things, all first graders are learning these things, and that it is embedded in our curriculum because it cannot be a standalone. We need to create data overview processes. It's important that we facilitate a process by which we are consistent about analyzing data. And I use the example of student learning objectives. This is a state mandate that teachers continue to struggle with, and we need to teach teachers, right, how they can lead this work really from the trenches, because they're certainly very capable of that, and we just have to create the systems to support them. And I've already talked about the New York State mandates that, you know, the park assessments or some form of an online assessment will be adopted by New York State. I'm not incredulous about that. I believe it will happen. Some people think it won't happen because some districts won't be ready. I'm not sure that the state is concerned about whether or not we're ready, let me just say that. And this new data dashboard, we've all been invited, all the superintendents and some cabinet members have been invited to a webinar, BOSIS, in August, that will roll out SchoolNet and two other companies. And I'm going to have to find myself doing a lot of reading and calling, and my team, to try to figure out which one of these products would be the best one to go with versus having a chief information officer, someone who is skilled in this area, to be able to say, "This is the one you should go with." The district technology plan right now, that you can find online, is dated 2007 to 2010. It needs to be updated, and it needs to be a fluid document, needs to continually reflect the district mission and shared accountability targets. We see the chief information officer in partnership with others leading this work. Again, I talked about the 21st century learning piece, the increased stakeholder participation. We see many people on this particular district-wide committee, and we see many subsets of this committee. Now, there's a lot of smart people, smart and interested people in this town that can help us move this work forward. But it's important that we have someone leading or co-leading the work that has a sense of where the district is going and has the level of expertise necessary to lead the work. And we need to be committed to allocating resources to support the plan. These, again, are the state mandates that I won't go through a fourth time. I just think it's important that we know that some of this stuff is non-negotiable. You can't choose not to do it. The reorganization plan is also focused on succession planning. As part of our role as an executive team, we certainly need to always be looking towards the future and how we can ensure that when there are impending retirements, that the knowledge base of those individuals, the historical knowledge of those individuals that will go into the next phase of their lives, don't just walk out the door with them, we have to have a plan for that. So I just want to highlight that there are several retirements, impending retirements coming up in the district of leadership for informational technology and the infrastructure. And in that case, that is Dave Björk, October 2013, retirement of district support for data management. Christine March has talked about being eligible to retire. She is the person that is, has really led the data upload to level one, which is something you're required to do as a school district when you're reporting many of the pieces of data that you are mandated to report to the state. December 2013, retirement of district support for financial management. We have a person working as our treasurer that will be moving towards retirement. We have just adopted finance manager, as I mentioned earlier, and so that will be, I think, overweight, that really needs to be filled in terms of having a knowledge base of a new piece of software that we've adopted, again, that can be leveraged in ways beyond just the business operations. Finance manager is a very versatile tool, and we need someone that understands its versatility and the company itself, really, and having contacts with that company, understanding how to get the company to build the modules that we need. That's sort of how some of these companies move forward. They hear from people in the trenches, and that's how School Tool became actually one of the number-one used school management, student management system in New York State because people from the trenches continue to call them and say, "There's a new state mandate, we need you to build a module for that." And, you know, having a point of contact and a person who's continually talking to representatives from the companies that you're dealing with, that are providing these information systems, is critical. I've talked about human resources, in particular as a result of our last internal audit, and some pieces that we really need to be more supportive of in terms of putting controls in place. So this is really small, so I'm glad that I gave this out, and I apologize that it's not easily seen. But I'm going to ask Lisa to go through where we have identified the resources, the financial resources, to sustain the creation of the chief information officer position.
So you can see in the first, this is a three-year projection of the cost and then where the resources are coming from to cover that cost. So in 2013, 2014, the current year, the salary of $105,000 plus benefits for a total of just under $144,000. We plan to support that cost this year by not filling the director of secondary curriculum position, so this will just be in place of that position. And also, we have, this is our final year of race-to-the-top funding, so we're using a portion of that to cover the remainder of the cost for this year. And then for 2014, 2015, and 2015, 2016, we have also that, the same position, and then we have some additional, the expected retirements that Connie talked about, we have some breakage and a plan to, you know, we have lower salaries, obviously, if we keep the title and position the same, a new person coming in would be at a lower rate than the current position. But then we also are considering some changes, maybe a restructuring in the positions themselves. So these are estimated savings from breakage. So in all three years going forward, we have at least covered the cost of the salary, and I included the 3% raise each year.
So it's important to say that this is not the position of an administrative position in this district. We have, at this point, put a vacancy control measure in place for the director of secondary curriculum. So in other words, we are not planning to fill that position. We have certainly spoken to the person that held this position to comprehensively understand the work that they were doing. We do not want to send a message to the district or community that this work is unimportant to us, that it's not valued. And in the job description that we developed for the chief information officer, we ensured that many of the things that the director of secondary curriculum was moving forward, the work that that person was moving forward, is encompassed. the work that that person was moving forward, is encompassed within the chief information officer position. Other things that can happen in terms of the board moving forward in this way of creating a chief information officer position is that some of the things that Ms. George is leading and some of the things that Ms. Johnson is leading can then be transferred to the role of chief information officer. An example of this is in terms of Ms. George curriculum instruction. Right now, she leads the facilitation execution of the 3-8 testing administration program. That includes making sure that we have enough scorers. That includes making sure that the boxes are picked up in a way that protects test integrity, for example, and it also includes ensuring that the data is uploaded in a way that, again, is accurate. All of those things would be shifted to the chief information officer. Right now, Ms. George also supervises the technology department. Those things would be shifted to the chief information officer. Having done Ms. George's, having been in her role in a, in a prior district, I know that it's very difficult to pay close attention to all of the things that can be a part of that role. And she's very good at her job. She works around the clock like all of us, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But when I was in the role, I sure wished that I could pay closer attention, in particular, to the technology piece. I think it would have made a critical difference. So with that, I will end there and invite any questions that you may have.
I have a couple of questions. I'm curious to know what the, will there be some sort of public face for the CIO? Because I think engaging the community stakeholders will be important and you need someone who really understands that technology and what they're doing and how to express that to the community, maybe some members of which don't, can't really comprehend why it's important or what it is even. Is that a component of this position?
I would say yes to that. I would really hope that at at least every other board meeting, that we were inviting the chief information officer to come and present information in a way, again, that's interpretable and understandable to the community. We also recognize, again, that this, this role of the secondary curriculum director is critical. And so we would hope that, and I've already spoken to the principal at the high school, Mr. Morgan, we would hope that we'd be able to have that person sitting at the high school at least two days a week. So that office is still available. The director of secondary curriculum office is still available. And, and the facilitators, for example, the facilitators at the high school were very comfortable with the access that they had to the director of secondary curriculum, particularly around the development of SLOs and some, some support that they received from that role. So we certainly would have that person available to the people in the trenches. I think the other piece in terms of public exposure is going to be the professional development that this person facilitates around building assessment literacy, not just for educators and, and teaching educators how to teach students how to self-assess, right? But also for the public, right? So the public can understand the district technology plan once we get that far down the path, and I don't know that it will take that long. But it would be the, the chief information officer sharing that information with the public, again, in a way that's, that's easily digestible.
Okay. Yeah, I, the other thing is, the way I understand it, right now, there's a handful of different programs that are used to track different data sets related to our students. And I think one of the problems is, is taking that information from all these different, slightly overlapping programs and understanding it and kind of coagulating it into a picture of a student or a picture of a, of a subset. And I can only imagine how much time that wastes to go here and here and here to try and gather all those pieces of information, whereas if you had someone, obviously, I'm, it's important, this officer, I think it's a great leap forward. But, I mean, is there a, is there any way to quantify how much time is wasted?
So I, I think that would be, that would be tough, right? To quantify the amount of time. I don't want to say that's, that's wasted, but that is spent on tracking the data.
Right.
That's okay. I don't mean to be corrective, Andy, sorry. I think what's critical, too, is not only do we have systems that perhaps are redundant in nature, but I think the most essential people who need access to the data do not have access, right? Even after we access the data, it's, it's not really the people who we need to have the data, and that is essentially the teachers, right? They need to have the data. They need to understand how to use the data to provide a boon to student success, right? To meet the needs of all of the learners that are in front of us, to have as much information about them as immediately as possible so that they can leverage that information to make the difference. It's, it's just really as straightforward as that and...
So if I could add something?
Yes.
One of the things that I think is happening now is that we have this data, as you're, as you're mentioning, in different places. And so I would submit that the time wasted is in that we don't have, it's not that we're digging around trying to pull it out because we don't really even know what to ask for because we're not sure what's there except for what we put in ourselves, right? So I'm thinking about a teacher. Teacher puts in some data they have on their own class, but they don't have really a way to even know that, "Oh, I could see how my class is doing compared to every other class," or we don't, we don't have those questions yet because we haven't seen that data in front of us. So the gap, in my opinion, or where the time is wasted, is that then we aren't as informed in terms of our planning and our instruction because we don't know if we're only planning for the gaps of the kids around us, you know, whereas, hey, Jeff over here doesn't have those gaps and so I don't know that I could be asking him, "What are you doing?" And, and that whole systems piece of it is where we're wasting time. Not that we're going, "Oh, where, how, how do I get this and how do I get this?" We're not even doing that yet. So I think this, just being able to see what we could have access to is going to help bridge that gap between, and that, you know, that's a big piece of our theme moving forward, which is collaboration. And, you know, how do we work together to, to, to close that gap in a, in a bigger level than just in our classroom, you know?
That's really important that you, thank you really for that, to highlight the macro level, how, how critical it really is. We could reach a level in our district where we agree that we should be looking at the fourth grade assessment item, doing an item analysis, right, of the state exam. And we should agree that we could look at how all of our fourth grade students are doing on a particular item or, or particular items that are aligned with a certain strand of the common core and know, right, that a particular, we could learn from that, that a particular teacher, that her students are flying high, right? So, and, and maybe if we look at it, the rest of our students are just performing at a, at a medium level or mediocre level. Or, you know, I would really want to know that as a fourth grade teacher because the first thing I would do is pick up the phone and call that fourth grade teacher across town and say, "What are you doing to teach that particular standard? I just need to know." So when you say waste time, you might, it might be time better spent, right, to be on the phone with that, that educator who has mastered that particular instructional strategy around that particular strength.
I think what I was trying to get at is the ease of access that was spoken about. I think a lot of times when people start hearing about technology and, and data and all this stuff, they feel like it steps out too far and you don't get an individual view. But I think in reality, this will really help to bring even more of an individual micro view to complement that macro view.
And, excuse me. So Andy, I think one of the things that you're also recalling is with the School Tool presentation, you really kind of described that over the course of this particular year, the school year that just ended, we've really built a house. We have a structure there. We have a roof on it. There's some windows. We have it so that it's up and functioning and we have kind of the bare bones in there. Now we're going to be putting all the furniture in there. And we do have a number of different databases and we will be identifying which databases are our priorities in order to get in within the system of School Tool as well as School Tool IQ in terms of the assessment and data pieces. But there are a number of different databases that we all do go into. We go into a discipline database. We go into free and reduced lunch database. We go into an attendant, like an at-risk type of a database. It has all sorts of information. So in terms of being able to take those different databases and to have them in one system, that would be part of the role of this person's position.
The data that we talk about here a lot, that obviously is a focus of this person, day-to-day responsibilities is to track the data. Well, to track the data, you need to, you'll need, we'll need the hardware and the infrastructure to do that. The district has begun down that path, starting this year. How do you see this person coming into the role of helping us to finish that hardware, those transitions that we began this year?
Thank you. That's a great question. This person will have to come with the expertise of understanding technology infrastructure. So that's a critical part of this person's role. How to be able to examine how we have begun down that path, the commitment that we've made this year to building out our infrastructure and being able to articulate that, again, not just in the district-wide technology committee, although that's going to be a critical place for that person to be talking about that because part of what we need to understand is where we are today, now that we've made that commitment to, for those resources to build out our infrastructure. Where do we go next in terms of continuing to build out the infrastructure? And the critical question is why? Where are we going with that? Why are we going to, for example, ensure that all of our classrooms have wireless access? Or maybe we're not going to do that. Maybe we're going to say, you know what, K and one, really, we might not need wireless access, although I don't agree with that. I'm just using it as an example. But how do we phase it in and why? How is that tied to curriculum? How will that support, again, the targets that we set for what kids should know and be able to do in, in a 21st century learning environment? So that person's role is going to be critical to that. So this person's going to have to know a lot of stuff, Michael. They're going to have to be able to understand infrastructure. They're going to have to understand curriculum, particularly at the secondary level. And they're going to have to understand lots of information systems and how they work together to promote efficiencies within a district.
I think it's a great idea and I appreciate the effort that went into this, particularly the amount of time that I'm sure you and Ms. Green put in to give us the three-year projections. You know, we saw that this year when we were doing our budget planning. We're, we're trying to become more proactive in looking at long-term and I, and I appreciate the effort that went into this to show us these three-year projections and, and the costs because, you know, when we break it out this way, it's, it's a, it's a zero-sum game, which is, which is great in our current budget climates. So I like, I like the idea of reorganizing and doing more with the same amount of money and I, and I think we, I think you've demonstrated you've done it here. I appreciate the effort that you've all put into it.
I think that, I'm, I'm in full support of this. I just want to kind of add a few comments. I think that we're in a position where we have to do more with less. And the only way you can do more with less in this world is to have efficient decision support systems. And those efficient decision support systems only work if we have, if it's feasible and it's only feasible with a person to, to take care of all of these things. So the addition of an, of a, of a chief information officer is critical for us to, to move forward and to find those efficiencies and that effectiveness. How long, I've been on the board for three years and in this, this day of age, day of, day and age where we have information at our fingertips, we've waited months and months and months for decisions to help us plan for the next year. We've waited, you know, for state data to come back for three and four months where we have to plan for, for our next year. You know, anything that shortens that time for, to use the data in a decision capacity is, is very important for us right now. So I'm full support of all of these changes in our, our data systems and, and the efficiencies and effectiveness that they, they will give us.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
5.2, Say Yes to Education, is that one?
On July 11th, Carol Soules, Camille Johnson, and Lila Georgian and myself met with Mary Anne Schmidt, president of the Say Yes Foundation, to explore a potential partnership with that organization. For those who are unaware of this organization, they are a nonprofit foundation that works with primarily very large school districts. Right now, they're working with Syracuse and have entered into a partnership with Buffalo that has taken them a year or two comprehensively developed to ensure that, for, for the purpose of a shared goal around ensuring that students are successful in accessing graduation from college, right? So this organization's main objective is to ensure success in post-secondary education for students in public school systems. Mary Anne Schmidt Carey has been the president for the Say Yes Foundation for the past seven years. She has, and help me here, Carol, I believe she said 26 years' experience in this work. She's a very impressive individual. Some of her past includes work on political campaigns. She has worked for the United States Department of Education in the past and I believe she has worked for a large corporation, including Xerox, at a very high level. She's also currently a member of Cuomo's Education Reform Commission. So we talked with her a little bit about that. She estimates that the commission is about halfway through their work right now and will be reconvening shortly. She talked about what a massive undertaking it is for a district to agree to partner with the Say Yes Foundation because it is not really just the district. It is the entire city and county, right? So there are non-negotiables when a district and city and county partner with the Say Yes Foundation. Again, the primary commitment is that we are trying to ensure that students are graduating from college primarily, although I think they do recognize other post-secondary planning that, that leads to employment, gainful employment, right, where people can take care of themselves and their family, their families. So the others, the other parts of the non-negotiables in partnering with Say Yes include longer school day and that can be before school or after school, but that is certainly part of what the commitment would be. I think, she talked a little bit about, Ms. Ms. Schmidt Carey talked a lot, actually, about closing the achievement gap and closing the opportunity gap. And I learned much in speaking with her. Again, she's a very, very impressive individual and you can tell by her disposition when she's talking about this work that she is completely committed to it. One of the things that we know happens in students, with students in particular from poverty, is this lack of opportunity. And I, for one, have never been able to quantify sort of what that means. But she, because she's engaged in this work all the time, did that for us in this meeting and I, I was really astounded. She stated that families that live in poverty can only afford to spend up to about $400 to promote enrichment opportunities for their students in music and the arts or soccer or baseball, et cetera, karate. And she said that, you know, when middle-class families want to promote opportunities for their children, they just buy them, right? To the tune of about $5,500 to $6,000 a year. So when she talks about, and when Say Yes talks about closing the opportunity gap, that's what they're referencing. So it's more than just the achievement gap. And we know from research that students that participate in co-curricular activities do better. We just know that. That's a strong research base in education and it's just a fact. Other non-negotiables include... Other non-negotiables include, again, partnering with the city and county, providing resources that support well-care visits, for example. They found that many families don't engage in just well-care visits, they only take their students or children to the doctor when they're ill. And mental health services, because they've also found in working with Syracuse and Al Buffalo, that there's a lot of youngsters in our system that are in our classrooms with undiagnosed trauma. And so mental health services is a critical part of the non-negotiable partnership that would ensure that they would be willing to work with us and us with them. So having said all of that, I don't know if Carol and Lila want to share anything else about it. She also said, the President also said that she will be meeting with her board, I believe, in October. And right now they're at capacity, because they've been in this year-long planning process with Buffalo, even though their board, because she does have a board, their board doubled their staffing. She told us to not be terribly impressed with that, because that means, I don't know, I interpreted that as going from two to four perhaps, or maybe four to eight, but it was, you know, it was not a tremendous amount of additional staffing. And so right now, they're, they don't have the capacity to really partner with the Auburn and Large City School District. But what I did think we gained from that, other than the knowledge that she shared, is I think a critical contact person in this President of Say Yes, she certainly gave us some ideas about how we might look to support our co-curricular after-school programming. And she did say that we could call on her in the future if we wanted to speak with her further about any other ideas that we might want to develop or perhaps leverage a partnership in terms of our relationship with her. I think that we talked to her a little bit about, you know, some of these grants that the New York State Education Department continues to talk about and not well-defined, like community schools and other competitive grant funds that they've identified for these initiatives that the Governor will roll out. And so we certainly will be in contact with her about when she thinks those grants will be clearly defined for us to be able to apply for, and perhaps what the best pathway to meeting with success regarding those grants might be.
Six point zero, committee reports, workshops, meetings. Six point one, dates for subcommittees for the Board of Education.
We kind of started this conversation last time about trying to come up with specific dates for committees, just wanted to revisit that, if any other committees had had a conversation in or wanted to, you know, start to set specific dates.
Well, the Policy Committee, I did contact Eli and Amanda and after Amanda had asked, Eli said the second, he's going to continue to be on it, so the second Tuesday of the month.
Before a board meeting?
Before a board, yep, before a board meeting. Would be good for us. I think Camille was okay with that too, so starting in September, we would be doing that.
And then obviously time would vary depending on whether we have an executive session or what time the board meeting was.
We would make any modifications that are necessary and we'd have to have it before, after, switch the day, figure it out.
Okay. So Policy, second Tuesday of each month before a board meeting. Curriculum instruction, we had kind of, Lila set that up last year for like the third Monday or third Tuesday of the month. Do you want to continue with that?
That works for me. Yes, if you give me a date, that would be best. That'd be great.
Okay. Third Monday? Do you have yours scheduled this year?
As long as it's early on Monday, not Tuesday.
You stay with time, what time?
About 8:30, 8:30 I can do.
That works.
Okay. Third Monday of each month. Want it to just say 8:30 for now and if we have to push it to 8, we always cut.
Sure.
And that was Gyllenhaal's instruction.
Do we start that in September or is that going to be?
Well, we should probably have one over the summer, maybe in August. Lila, you want to look at August and see if maybe we could do the third Monday in August?
Sure.
I'll email out. Okay, thank you. Any other committees got a chance to speak with each other or half of the data is up yet?
Excuse me, I did not contact the facilities, only because I know all of you guys all work days, right? And you were, I was concerned with mostly, because I know you travel. So is an evening better?
Well, not necessar, I think an evening would be more of an inconvenience for, based on the people that attend, I would think a day.
Okay.
Well, right, I mean, because don't, particularly now with the Capital Project, we have to, we have to see. I don't want inconvenience all at now.
Yeah, see, what I've been doing, Mike, I go to the monthly meetings for the updates of what's going on facility-wise and, I think we just had one yesterday, and then I would bring it to you guys for discussion and any ideas, but I can get, probably print it out, progress sheet if you, if you guys are like that. This is not the meeting that you went to on July 2nd, this is something I go to with the contractors. But it was good for you guys. I know you guys go, oh, we've got crazy hours, I don't know what yours are, but I know you're pretty tight up at day.
As long as I know ahead of time, I can, as long as we stay away from Wednesdays.
Well, my weekend is Sunday, Monday, so if, if a Monday was available for the other two, that would be.
Monday morning for an hour?
Monday morning, yeah, if we did have some, around a Monday morning. We have four, so, so the ones I can't attend to, then we don't have the tiebreaker.
Yeah. Like an 8 o'clock, is that too early? Good?
That's what I said, let's give that a shot.
And which week of the month would that be?
Jeff, what's that?
Yeah, the thing that I would just caution you is, the second Monday and usually the fourth Monday are the big CEO ones that we have for Capital Projects. So I would say the first or the third Monday would be the best. And what's great is you can still have Joe Laurel and Matt can be there from SWBR, they'll still be able to go to those, those facilities meetings with us. So I would be looking probably at the first Monday of the month.
That go to you?
It's as good as any.
And then, then we can get a broader view of everything there is.
Do you want to start that August? Because the first Monday in September would be Labor Day.
Yeah.
Want to shoot for the first Monday in August as your next meeting?
That's good.
We didn't really talk about it. We just said we would talk about it here.
Yeah.
Well, I always block my Tuesdays out, so, see, we're doing the second Tuesday for Policy Committee if we wanted to do for Long Range Planning the third.
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday.
I'm okay with that as well.
Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah. Loretta's hands are flying over there too. 1:00 AM the time. Unless you guys want to set a time, 6?
Five, I mean, I can even make it a, if you guys want to do five.
Sounds good.
Five, okay.
Third Tuesday of each month, 5:00 o'clock, starting August?
Yeah.
With the Audit Committee, we haven't had our first meeting yet. And we probably need, probably need Alicia to participate in that conversation.
So just get back to us on Audit Committee. Good. Get all that, Loretta? All right, thank you.
That'll be here.
All of them planning to be here at Tumnen?
Yeah. Well, no, except for Policy, that'd be wherever we determine the board meeting will be at that date. So Policy will, the traveling committee.
That will be the same for the Long Range Planning if we have a third.
Six point two, minutes of Audit Committee meeting.
These were the minutes that were included in your exhibits. We talked about all of these issues last time, although we did not vote on these minutes. That was internal auditor, external auditor, and the review of the CSEA, which you got for overtime comp audit, which everybody should have received in an update. I don't know which update. So you have a chance to read that. So those are the, those are the two things that are action items for us.
Questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dia, seconded by Eli. Discussion, all in favor. Opposed, staying carried.
Six point two point one, final report on CSEA, overtime comp time for us, that's review audit.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dia. Seconded by Eli. Discussion, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, staying carried.
Six point three, update on Facilities Committee meetings held on July 1st and July 2nd, 2013. Mr. Jane Brecko, Mr. Andre, Mr. Roble, and Mr. McCall.
Actually, I'm going to report out on that, because that was back when I was still on the committee, before we established the new committee. And again, we've already discussed these minutes. It was from the July 1st and July 2nd, we discussed it on July 2nd, and it was all the change orders that went through on July 2nd that were approved.
Six point three point one, minutes of Facilities Committee meetings.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sam.
Second.
Seconded by Andy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, carried. Sorry, I have to get used to that voice. Sometimes I can do without looking up.
Six point four, update on Long Range Planning Committee meeting held on July 9th, 2013. Ms. Carver, Mrs. Brogram, Mrs. Rhodes, and Mr. Roble.
So you've got the meeting minutes for that as well. What we did, we spent the majority of the time planning our board retreat, which is this Sunday. You have bulleted items, which is the agenda, mostly for the retreat, Sunday 2 to, 2 to 8, right? 2 to 8, Sunday afternoon place to be announced. And so our major topics, communications, internal, external communications, protocols for split decisions, we thought we have a conversation about that within our subcommittees that have four and just kind of come up with a rule for everyone, so that every individual committee wasn't deciding how to handle it. We're going to review Policy 1340. We're going to review and revisit rules of decorum for board members. We're going to develop board goals. We're going to review our current evaluation tool, discuss other work sessions, and talk about book studies.
And we have a place.
And we have a place now.
It's at the Hilton.
We're going to go to the Hilton.
We'll send you a note about that, but it's in that, I think they call it the library room. Do they call it the library room? It has a fireplace in it, it's right at the front of the hotel.
Yeah, it's on the front, closest to the front door. Big window, it's like we'll see.
We agreed that dinner would be on our own, we would all stay at the Hilton, but we would pay for it ourselves, Dutch, guys.
Right. Right. Any further questions?
Thank you. Six point four point one, minutes of Long Range Planning Committee meeting.
Do I have a motion?
No.
Seconded by Dia, seconded by Amanda. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying carried.
Dates to be numbered. Seven point zero, old business. Eight point zero, financial matters. Eight point one, declaration of surplus property.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Sam. Seconded by Dia. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying carried.
Eight point two, district designation of Anadaga Courtland Madison Workers Compensation Consortium, representative to the Board of Directors.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Kathy.
Second.
Seconded by Michael. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying carried.
Eight point three, interrenewable agreement, guidance counselor.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dia.
Second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, carried.
Eight point four, internal claims report, period ending 6/30/2013.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Eli.
Second.
Seconded by Andy. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, carried.
Eight point five, resolution relating to the installment fee purchase financing.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Michael, seconded by Amanda. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying carried.
Eight point six, approved agreement, internal auditor.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dia, seconded by Eli. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying carried.
Eight point seven, accept response to management orders.
Do I have a motion? Moved by Michael.
Second.
Seconded by Andy. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying carried.
At this point, the Board will consider whether to receive the consigned agenda for items 9.0 through 11.1, including additional items 9.45 through 9.53.
Do I have a motion? Moved by Eli.
Second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying carried.
Adherent.